We'd like to welcome you to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Tuesday, September 5, and we would like to ask you to rise and join us in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Schottke, can you take the roll?
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Reverend Matias.
Here.
Mr. Ross. Ms. Schottke, here. Ms. Slade.
Here.
And President Faub.
Present. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda as written? Support for that?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Next on the agenda is celebrations.
Dr. Faub and members of the board, I'd like to ask Dr. Maida Gunnel to come forward, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Neal, President Faub, and board members, I'd like to update you on a celebration that will be taking place for Hispanic Heritage Month in September. And I am very excited to let you know that we have an author, award-winning author, Lucia Gonzalez, who will be here on September 26 and September 27. And she will be presenting two of her award-winning books, and you may have heard those. The Bossy Gallito and The Storyteller's Candle, La Velita de los Cuentos. And she will be presenting at Dickinson on the 26th. She will also have lunch with students at Dickinson. She will then go to Sibley Elementary. And we will have a district-wide parent night at Sibley Elementary where students are invited and also parents will be invited and staff. On Wednesday, she will have breakfast with the media on Southwest Community Campus. She will present to Southwest Community Campus students there on Wednesday. And also, then she heads to Cesar Chavez Elementary. So that is the district-wide event that we're having. I think you received her bio in your board packets.
Mm-hmm.
So we're excited to have her here. And also, we are compiling a list of other activities that will be taking place at the schools during the month of September. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gunnel.
Thank you.
President Faub, I'd like to ask John Hemholt to come forward, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Weatherall Neal.
Good evening.
Or President Dr. Faub, members of the board. It's an honor to be here tonight on the brink of a groundbreaking and ribbon-cutting that's going to happen next week, September 11 through the 13th. We are very fortunate to have our friends from Student Advancement Foundation, Michelle Sahovsky and Matt Cook from Lake Michigan Credit Union, to share a little bit of the story. But if I could kind of back it up a little bit and share, you know, we own this Sigsbee School property. Formerly Sigsbee Elementary, formerly Southeast Academic Center, currently home to ELNC, Great Start Readiness Preschool Program, as well as the Believe to Become and Spectrum Health are all located on this property. There's a playground there that has been a little aged over time. And we got notice when there was a licensing of the Sigsbee Park for the preschool site that there was equipment that needed to be removed. So as we were approaching the summer, we had about $150,000 worth of equipment that needed to be ripped out and with no plan to replace it. And that's when a little godsend came our way. Where Lake Michigan Credit Union had reached out to SAF. And the rest is history. And so I'm going to turn to Michelle. I think she has the details and I can certainly chime in. But we're really fortunate because you had not only our largest partner, Lake Michigan Credit Union, but the Michigan Economic Development Corporation came up with their matching fund. And then local businesses like Early Bird, like Harmony Brewing stepped up and helped raise the extra dollars. And again, Michelle will tell you the rest.
Yeah, we're so excited to be here, one week from the build, which is actually going to be next Monday and Tuesday, September 11 and 12, done by volunteers. And really, right from the start, this has been a project that has been about the community and the community coming together. In total, over 150 individuals, businesses, and community groups gave over $135,000 to make this build a reality. Again, as John was saying, the project started thanks to a lead gift from Lake Michigan Credit Union, and I have Matt Cook here with me today. And as part of LMCU's commitment, not only did they give us sponsorship dollars, but they really have been a partner throughout it. And they partnered us with Carter's Kids, which is a national nonprofit that supports building playgrounds nationwide. So you add that, and then the local voice that just came out next to us, ELNC, the Easttown Community Association. And then the businesses of the Easttown Community, that Early Bird Cafe, Harmony Brewing, both held fundraisers to raise money. And you had Yesterdog come forward. Just across the board, it was community support. And that gets us to where we are today, which is the real winners of this project, which are the students, the families, and the kids that are going to be able to enjoy this new playground for years to come. It is just going to be such a wonderful update for that school and for the community that we live in. So I'm so excited to be here. I will let Matt say something if he'd like to, but I would also like to invite all of you next Wednesday evening, from 6:00 to 7:30, we are having a community open house. It's open to the public. And we'd love for you to come out and check out the new playground when we're all done building it, so.
I'll be brief and just say that we're really proud to be a part of this project and really proud of the work that the board and Superintendent Neal and your teachers do in educating the students of this community. And we're just really excited for the project next week to happen and the community rallying together to make it happen. So we hope all of you can make it out.
We have a ribbon-cutting press conference next Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. I know it's been sent out to you, but just a little reminder to make sure it's on your calendar. And join us both for that celebration, as well as the evening community celebration.
Awesome. Thank you both for your leadership on it.
Thank you.
So it's one week into school, and Mr. Gorman, do we have a student rep? No pressure. Dr. Gorman. Dr. Gorman. Dr. Gorman. Yeah, alright, awesome. Do we have public comment for board agenda items?
We do not.
Okay, secretary's report.
Just one this evening. Well, for the past 100 years, America's high schools have remained virtually unchanged. Yet the world around us has transformed dramatically. It's time to turn the American spirit of ingenuity toward our high schools and come together as a nation to give our students the education they deserve. Which is why some of the biggest names in entertainment will join students, parents, educators, and more for a must-see live television event. EIF presents XQ Super School Live on Friday, September 8, that's this Friday, at 8:00 p.m. Eastern Standard Time to ABC, CBS, Fox, and NBC for a look at the future of high school. I hope you'll tune in and see a little bit about us. Thank you.
Awesome. Committee chair updates. Academic Achievement Committee, Reverend Matias.
Yeah, we're meeting September 19th. Will be our first academic achievement committee. Some of the things that we're going to be covering is kind of an overview of the assessment map, so really get a picture of what's coming ahead of us. Again, kind of look at our legal mandate, our responsibilities as a committee and what that entails and other kinds of issues, too.
Great, thank you. Ad hoc did not meet, so.
That's correct, yep. Planning on October.
Dr. Baker?
Yes, we met and had a fairly routine meeting that will vote on purchasing agenda, etc. I did get contacted by our auditor, so we'll be beginning to get information from them as we go through the fall about the budget audits from last year. That's it.
I want to encourage board members who are not serving on a committee. You can certainly come and watch a committee, not participate, but watch. And/or these are recorded, so it's put it on where you're on your exercise bike or something, so. It'll be great. Just hearing about the MAP stuff, I think it's a good review or introduction if you're not familiar with it. It's good.
The audits can be fun.
Yeah, and the audit, too. I want to shortchange that. Centulating, yeah. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Faub, and members of the board. I would like to ask Dr. Ron Gorman to come forward. And you only have first week of school report by Dr. Gorman, but we have been able to get several wonderful people to join our GRPS family. And I am so pleased to introduce, for Dr. Gorman, to introduce the new employees. We are looking for exciting things to happen in Grand Rapids Public Schools, and we just continue to fine-tune the machine, so.
Right, so good evening, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, President Faub, distinguished members of our Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to provide an update of the first week of school. But before I do that, I would like to introduce you to some members of our administration, those who are new to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and those who are in a new position this year. So at first, I will start off with high schools. And administrators, when I say your name, please stand. First up, I would like to introduce or reintroduce Ryan Huppert, who is the principal of City High Middle, former assistant principal of CA Frost. Next up, we have Mr. Bradley Ludwig, who is the former assistant principal at Ottawa Hills High School. He's taken over for Ryan Huppert at CA Frost Middle High as an assistant principal. Behind me, Union High School, I have Ms. Antonisha Staten, who was formerly the dean at Ottawa Hills High School, and now is the dean at Union High School. Over to my right, we have Mr. Koschik Sarakar, who is the principal of Ottawa Hills High School.
Oh, that's who that was out there.
Yeah, that's who that is. Comes to us from the Kalamazoo Public Schools. Next up, we have Jessie Radden, who is the assistant principal at UPREP. She was a former classroom teacher at UPREP, and she has been promoted to assistant principal. Next up, we'll go to our elementary schools. So we have Adam Rustikas, who is right behind me. Formerly classroom teacher at CA Frost, is now the principal at East Leonard. Next up, assistant principal at Grand Rapids Montessori, Ms. Lorinda Olds. She comes to us from the elegant ISE. To my right, at the Grand Rapids Museum School, we have Dr. Jamita Lewis, who is the assistant principal, who comes to us from the east side of the state at another museum school.
Oh, we are not mentioning names. No other museum school, mostly Grand Rapids museums.
West side is the best side.
To my left, at Ridgemore Park Montessori, Mr. Forrest Cliff, former assistant principal at Grand Rapids Montessori. To my left again, Dr. Tim Maven, former assistant principal at UPREP, now the principal at Shawmut Hills. Southwest Community Campus, Mr. Carlos De La Barrera, who's right here, former assistant principal at Westwood. He is now at Southwest Community Campus as our principal. To my left, special education, our K-12 Special Education Director is Sarah Van. She comes to us from the New York City Public Schools. And lastly, we have Ms. Rosie Holmes, who was the assistant principal at Alger, who is now a director in the Office of Extended Learning. So ladies and gentlemen, please give a nice round of applause. So I would like to start with registrations. Last week, we had a presentation from Jimell and his team from Student Data Services. And we are pleased to announce that before the first day of school, 9,000 families registered online. So there were 9,000 families that before the first day of school were able to register with our new online platform. And that sure makes our lives a heck of a lot easier on the first day of school. And so that's a huge celebration for us. From an enrollment perspective, as you know, last year was the first year in 20 years that we've been able to increase our enrollment. And we are pleased to announce, on the fifth day of school this year, we are 200 students ahead of where we were on the fifth day of school last year. So that is a huge celebration for us. Last week, as you know, the first week of school, students seemed to trickle in. Last week, we already had over 15,000 students on the first week of school. And that was with the early start, the pre-Labor Day start that everyone was worried about. And so that's a huge win for us.
Awesome.
Our team, our superintendent's cabinet, we continue to meet at 4:00 every single day to monitor enrollment in every single building. And in approximately one week, we are going to start balancing those classes. We don't want to do it too quickly as students are coming in, because we only want to do it once. But about a week from today, we're going to ensure that we balance classes. In those schools where we are up in enrollment, we're going to ensure that they have the staff members that they need. Lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't.
Dr. Gorman, and those that are down, finish the sentence.
And those who are down, we want to make adjustments for those schools as well. Thank you for catching that, Madam Superintendent. Absolutely. I would be remiss if I didn't provide some shout-outs from Week 1. So of course, we'd like to thank our students.
That's right.
Our students are in uniform, ready to learn on the first day of school. We truly appreciate that. The teachers, right away, digging into the curriculum, ensuring high expectations. And then our support staff and also our parents, just some thank-yous. And then, you know, lastly, transportation. You know, it takes a lot to transport students across town. And we'd like to provide a big shout-out to Dean Transportation, also The Rapid, for getting our students to and from school safely. We are excited about Week 1, but the best is yet to come. So thank you for allowing me to provide that update. If you have any questions, I'll take those at this time.
Questions for Dr. Gorman? No?
Awesome. Thank you. Great team behind you. We have several actions on tonight's agenda, and the first is the resolution. We had the press conference out front. Is there any questions regarding it? Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution to support for support for DACA and the Dream Act?
So moved.
Support.
Any deliberations? I don't see any. Take the vote.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
See.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the contract ratification for the Grand Rapids Public Schools Parapro Association. Can we get a little context on that?
You can. Sharon Pitts, I would ask that you come forward.
Good evening.
I believe we provided some material, detailed material in your packet. Did you get that? Okay. But essentially, we have settled with the same terms that we have our other support groups, meaning that they would also get the 1% increase and that they would also have a enrollment increase according to the schedule that we have outlined there. And I think that's really the highlight of the financial. Most of the other provisions were the same. And we did do a little bit of tweaking, because they did have a lot of members who had a lot of experience and had not received any increases over the years. And we tried to balance a little bit of that out so that there would be some recognition of their experience levels. I'm trying to think if there was anything else. No, I think that was really it. I think the rest of it was just consistent with what we had done with the other MEA groups, support groups that we did. We tried to stay really consistent and bring everyone in line.
Any questions?
Do you might have any?
I just wonder, this might be a little bit off. But I'm wondering, are we fully staffed in terms of our parapros, our teachers?
We're never fully staffed.
You're never fully.
No, but right now, we are, as I think you heard earlier, we're looking at enrollment. And we're going to decide, Superintendent Neal's going to decide at the end of this week sort of where our staffing adjustments need to be made. And we also, based on our teachers and what we need with students, we determine our paraprofessionals. However, that is one area that typically, for special needs students, we have vacancies.
Question on, what do we currently provide our parapro staff in tuition reimbursement?
I don't know right offhand, but there is a tuition reimbursement provision in their contract. I could certainly get you that information.
Okay. Reason I ask is because, you know, I've always viewed parapros as not being a lifelong occupation, but rather utilizing this core group to produce more teachers that are urban-based, that reflect the population that is served by the district. And I think in the overall thinking of the organization that we ought to be encouraging more of a pathway toward becoming teachers for this particular group.
Oh, we definitely do. And in fact, we do have some paraprofessionals right now in some programs. So that has been a group that we have gone toward extensively to see if they wanted to either go back to college or go into the schools of education. So we do have a few paraprofessionals right now pursuing their degrees. We've reached out to all of our paraprofessionals. And we actually have some paraprofessionals that are very close to being able to teach. And we have some paraprofessionals right now, or at least last year, we had that was doing student teaching for us. And we worked out an arrangement where they could student teach in the school that they had been as a parapro to and kind of do a joint assignment. So we've been very flexible in trying to encourage that, because we agree with you, that's a wonderful source of a pool of recruits. And we've had other programs with universities where we've tried to do that. There are some barriers, but typically, they're not as much financial as they are just being able to meet the new requirements that they have.
And if I could add, Dr. Baker has been wonderful in helping us with the program at Fair State University and helping our employees, and so really being part of the solution.
And too, and I think, thank you Superintendent Neal, because that, the program we've been trying to work on, especially bilingual and ESL teachers through that program, and that's been great. We've been trying to target that also.
Thank you.
No more questions. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay. Support?
Support.
Any deliberations? Vote.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any concerns, deliberations?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
And President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no discussion items. Ms. Schottke, do we have public comment?
I have none. Superintendent?
Dr. Faub, may I ask one question, please? I would like to know what space enhancement for Aberdeen is. I couldn't find that in anything that was sent to me, but I know that Berkeley Hills and Herman Miller, and I'm not exactly sure what.
Is in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Well, why don't we check it out after?
Oh, okay.
It was, we discussed it at the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay.
And Herman Miller has, in the church, has donated, I believe, supports for improving the teachers lounge.
The teachers lounge.
Yeah.
Do superintendents' comments?
Dr. Faub, thank you. I would like to just really give thanks to our parents, students, staff members, and the community for just embracing these children this past week. We started a week earlier than normal, but it does take a village. And everyone came out to support these students in order for us to get 15,000 children in the seats. That's because of people coming together. And so for that, I say thank you to this community and to our staff members.
Ms. Schottke?
Just a few thanks. Thank you to the Student Advancement Foundation and Lake Michigan Credit Union and our community partners, looking forward to a great week next week in building that new playground. Welcome to the new team members or to those of you moving around and growing in our organization. We're just so happy to have you be part of this great thing that is Grand Rapids Public Schools. Thank you for what you're doing for children in our community. And you may not have heard Dr. Faub, but she said, "Go team." And so I say that, too. Thank you.
Dr. Baker?
I also want to welcome everybody and new people or older people that are in the new roles. But I mean, I have to say, this is my own bias, but I was thinking that the great changes that have happened in Grand Rapids Public Schools, I think, is what helped you all to get here. And then I also was pretty impressed with you all being here, making Grand Rapids Public Schools that much better. So it feels really great having you guys here. I really, I'm really proud of the superintendent, the Grand Rapids Public School Board, and the community coming together to support students that are here for a variety of reasons and have been, and had the protections of DACA until, well, the next six, until the next six months is up. I've had, it's just, what's the beauty of DACA is that we work with children because they're children. It's not because of where they're from or what their status is or that of their parents. And I have the benefit of working with a lot of young people who are, who have the status of DACA. And it's, it would be difficult to imagine our community without that, without those young people. But also, I think that we had GRPS and Hispanic Center and Granville Avenue Arts and city commissioners and the mayor and state representatives and just friends come here to support us and to see us that Grand Rapids Public Schools is a symbol of doing the right thing in this community. And this is the place that you come to represent the perspective of doing good in our community. So it's pretty remarkable to be a part of it, and I think it took a lot of work. And again, I thank you guys for all, for joining us.
And so I follow that. But I echo the sentiments that I'm sure our entire board will have tonight. I was proud to vote and support our dreamers. I really appreciated what our superintendent said earlier this evening when she said, "It affects the whole community. We can't, we can't have something impact hundreds of our students and it not have a ripple throughout our community." We have a duty to serve them, and it also is a, it's important for my child to live in a community that will protect our children and be diverse for our children. So I was more than happy to be in support of that tonight. I also welcome our new staff, new or in a new position. A lot of you are in places and buildings that are really important to me. My daughter's a CA Frost student, so you'll be.
Look out.
You'll be enjoying the journey of a 13-year-old with me. But so thank you, guys, for the work that you all do, and I look forward to having a great year.
Mr. Ross?
I don't really think probably not much that can really be added. I mean, I wholeheartedly echo what, you know, the three folks have previously already stated. I guess the only thing I would add extra is extra really thanks to the boots-on-the-ground leadership that's represented by the 13 folks that we listed. And I do mean that sincerely, that, again, your boots-on-the-ground leadership is invaluable and probably seemingly underappreciated. But really, behind closed doors and conversations, it's totally recognized how valuable your leadership is. And thank you for that. And again, I guess, "Go team," right? Yeah, totally. Thank you.
I have to say, ditto to both of those statements about DACA and about staff and welcoming staff to the Grand Rapids Public Schools. It is, it is our good fortune to have been born in the greatest country on earth. And I wish that could be the case for everyone. And for you to, as a community, and I say you, Grand Rapids, and our board, to embrace children that, who have a dream and who have, for no, I guess, no fault of their own, were brought here in pursuit of an American dream that all people seek throughout the world, because we are the greatest. because we are the greatest nation on earth. I just appreciate the sensitivity of this board and the symbolic gesture of this resolution. And I hope that we exercise our political might to bring about a better change here. Thank you.
I too would like to welcome all of our new administrators. I see one especially over there that's going to get to deal with my little girl at museum school and my granddaughter at museum school. So welcome to you. I also wanted to say something that I was not aware of. And of course, I'm very happy that we passed the resolution about DACA as well. But this is something I don't know that everybody knows about unless you've got a kid who plays sports and you have to have a physical. And my daughter hasn't, my granddaughter hasn't been to her regular doctor, so I had to get her a physical. And I called because last year when she did it, we just went to Central and a lot of people just checked on her and off she went. And they said, "Well, you can go to Cherry Health Center at Center for Innovation." And I went there and I was so impressed. They didn't charge us anything. She saw a PA. They took all kinds of information from her. They would have given her shots and everything else that she needed. And I just think people need to know the kinds of things that we have available for our kids. It's, you know, and I was so pleased and so grateful that now I know about this and I can spread the word to other people who might need the same thing.
Ms. Slade?
Adding welcomes, I want to welcome parents who are new to the district. There's a critical, critical role for them in all of this, and we appreciate your trust in us. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to give kudos to the, to the online registration. You know, we're now getting ahead of the ball, and I think more and more parents will take advantage of that. It'll make it a lot easier for teachers to focus on orientation and other kinds of things that help our students really getting grafted into student life in their, in their school. So that was really exciting for the, for the new teachers as well as the administrators that we have that are new to us and of course, the DACA. I think this leads us to, as a broader community, to be able to really have a dialogue, not just for the sake of it, but because it, because it affects lives. And as our superintendent and others have said, it has a ripple effect. And we ought not be shy about now confronting these real issues and calling for some resolutions, some real resolutions to these kinds of matters. So there's some tough days ahead too. We're going to have to comfort a lot of people. We have to be ready for a lot of the emotional impact that it's going to have to our own kids who may not understand why their friend isn't there if whatever happens. So as a school district, we know that we're called upon to do more than just teach. And so I really appreciate the fact that we're sensitive to those things. So thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Schottke's right. Go team. Such talent I see out here. I'm so grateful and super excited about it. You guys are rocking it and going to rock it. So welcome, and we are here to support you in every way. It's awesome and very exciting. It's going to be a great year. DACA is very sobering this morning to have the executive order, but in that sobering moment, I am heartened by some bipartisan and this community coming together that we may get some legislation for a permanent path forward. So all hands on deck. We are adjourned.